I'd like to call to order the April 26, 2018, meeting of the Barnstable Town Council. Please note that tonight's meeting is recorded and broadcast on Channel 18, and that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence known. Seeing none, please silence your devices. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call.
Counselors, Beeden Bender.
Here.
Crocker.
Here.
Cullen.
Here.
Dagwone.
Here.
Flores.
Here.
Raprasetti.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Lebec.
Here.
Neary.
Here.
Schnep.
Here.
Stein Hilber.
Here.
Tinsley.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
That's thirteen.
Thank you very much. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This is our first meeting as a town council since the events of a couple of weeks ago. It took the life of K-9 Officer Sean Gannon in Yarmouth, and the shooting of his K-9 partner, Nero. And been a lot of shock, sadness in the community, obviously, that took place in our town, but we're all one Cape Cod, and I think the outpouring of community support in the thousands, including many in this room, whether it was at the vigil, or the processions, or the wake, or the funeral service itself, was a bit of a distraction in a way, but also heartening to see. But as that fades, I hope that we all keep all of our men and women, our police forces, in our thoughts, as they do our, do their job every day, which in many ways gets taken for granted, but most importantly, to keep Officer Sean Gannon in your thoughts and prayers, and his immediate and extended family. All right, this is the section for public comment. So if anyone wishes to speak, I'd ask that you please step forward, sign in, state your
Good evening. We are here to offer an opportunity to our town council to join constituents from Blishpoint in Barnstable Village, to work together with us for a great success story. It would grow the town's tax base, oh, Peter Halesworth, 30 Commerce Road, Barnstable. Would give our, it would grow the town's tax base, give our neighborhood's residents and businesses peace of mind, and provide the community a living lesson about the benefits of a responsible citizenry and an effective government. I would ask my neighbors to stand and be recognized. Thank you. Our neighborhood, Blishpoint in Barnstable Village, located on the northern tip of Millway, has a long history. Now it's a thriving residential neighborhood. In the summer, it's like a Norman Rockwell painting, come to life, with packs of happy kids, and relaxing and reuniting families. The real estate market in Blishpoint is hot. Beach cottages are steadily being replaced by larger houses. Assess values in this small neighborhood have climbed to $160 million, with a market value likely over $200 million. Property tax revenue is flowing from our neighborhood into town coffers at an annual rate of about $2 million, equal to the salaries of our town's firefighters. Blishpoint is a growing asset for our town. We all share its benefits, and we want that to continue. Unfortunately, this pretty picture now is being marred by recent floods, five in the past three winters, damaging or destroying these homes. And unless all stakeholders are proactive and come up with a game plan for a solution, we risk losing all of this if the flooding continues. Here are a few recommendations for my Blishpoint neighbors, five to be exact.
Got about thirty seconds.
Schedule aggressive seasonal maintenance of the current storm drainage system to unclog storm power, storm pipes and basins. Inspect and repair the drainage pipes and the valves from the marsh. Enhance our defenses with a higher berm along the sidewalk. Fast-track processing of permits needed by residents to renovate or rebuild. And collaborate with residents and all stakeholders. We are encouraged that our counselor, Mr. John Flores, has taken a personal interest in crafting a game plan with Town Manager Mark Els and DBW Head Dan Santos. This is a good start, but there is still much to be done. Thank you for the opportunity to make this statement.
Thank you.
My name is Doug Pace, and I live at 110 Commerce Road in Barnstable Village, and I've had a front row seat to the flooding on Commerce Road for decades. In, during the eighties, during a period of severe storms, the road flooded six times during the eighties, and I've actually watched it. The January four storm, it was absolutely impassable, and as far west as where Commerce Road crosses over the Marispin Creek, it was completely impassable to cars. I'd be happy to send the town counselors, I have photos from the storms in March where cars attempted to drive through. We've actually had a number of cars stuck in the road where people had to be removed from the cars. What I'm concerned about, my father is nearly eighty-seven years old. If there was an emergency for my father, or any of the other elderly people, and most of the people in our neighborhood are elderly, they could not get to them, and they couldn't leave. What I believe needs to be done is not only does the berm need to be raised, but the low lying areas of Commerce Road raised, so that there's an escape route for the more than hundred homes that are in that area. And I would implore the town to act, I appreciate the involvement, again, of our town counselor, our town manager, and DPW Director, to work on a solution so that it's safe for the people who live there, and, and I just would add as an aside, as a filter, that it's become one of the most desirable areas in Barnstable Village, and we need to keep that going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council. Good evening. I'm Charlie Hetzel, a single father to Leon Georgina Duffy Hetzel at 55 Seabrook Road in beautiful Hyannis, an address well-known to many police officers who've come to our home over the last seven years or so. They've come to assist us when we needed extra support ourselves within our own family, and when we were subjected to assaults and invasions of space by an inappropriately supervised, mentally ill DMH client, who also assaulted numerous police officers, social service workers, hospital personnel, over a two-year period. On many of these visits, police officers were performing functions that more properly should have been handled and prevented by a more effective and adequately funded Department of Mental Health and its subcontractors. I'm sure I could have done a better job as a parent at times, too. But the burden should not fall on the police, as they constantly seem to. The officers, detectives, men and women, young and old, experienced and inexperienced, community and homeless assistance, downtown officers, dispatchers, everybody involved, are all human beings, all of them with families at home, many of them experiencing the same problems as though that they, as those they are coming to help. I learned that from frank, honest, and humane discussions with them on my porch, or in my living room, or on the phone. They were more than police officers. They were peace officers, and loving human beings, each with his own or her own style, and each with his or her own story. They cared, they helped, they empathized, they set good examples for all of us. They were everything and more that a family or citizen could hope for. Well, tonight, I understand that a man who I have only met once, who has done so much to support his force and his community, is standing down, retiring. Throughout all this time, Chief McDonald's door was open. His care and concern were also reflected in his work with the C Street Community Meetings. Subsequent to those occasions, a nod of his head at meetings such as this town council meeting, or in passing on the street, or an occasional thumbs up, all speak to his leadership and compassion. His officers and personnel reflect well on him as he does on them. On behalf of my children and family, and so many others, I am sure, this is simply to say, thank you, God bless you, and may he keep you safe, as you have kept us safe. And thank you very much, and thank you for supporting him.
Thank you.
I live on 217 Commerce Road, and I lost my furnace because of the flooding, and...
Can you just state your name, sir?
Oh.
Yeah. The state.
Wrong.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I lost my furnace because of the flooding. Now, if I had some sandbags, I could have put them around where the water came into the basement, and I wouldn't have lost the furnace. And so if you people might be able to tell us where we could get sandbags, that would be helpful also. And my neighbor, Rob, had a good idea. The bridge that goes over the mill dam, I don't know how to put it as well as he does, but he said you could actually block that with a piece, with a, you know, thick piece of wood that would fold down prior to a storm, and it would keep water from coming into Commerce, that whole marsh area. And that might be something to consider. Now, the last thing, if I might say, if you knock the temperature down ten degrees in here, that could probably pay for it all. Thank you. Just joking.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Counselor responds to public comment. Counselor Flores.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank all of the constituents who came here this evening for Precinct One, the precinct that I represent. We are working towards a solution relative to this problem. As many of you know, twice last week, I had meetings with small groups, and then at one of the meetings, Mark Els as Town Manager, Andy Clyburn as Deputy Manager, and also Dan Santos, all came collectively together, along with a number of neighbors. And we listened to some suggestions, recommendations, sort of an historical perspective of what was compared to what is today, and I think with all of that information, I do know from an engineering perspective that the Town Manager has charged Dan Santos with coming up with a solution, as he suggested at the, at one of the meetings. The drains and all of those valves, those clapper valves that come out of the marsh, they're pretty much all designed for twenty-five year storms, if you will. The hundred year storms that we have been having, and they seem to be coming more and more frequently, speaks to the issue that what is now there, obviously, isn't solving what Mother Nature is bringing us. So we have to collectively come together, figure out how to resolve this, and I applaud all of you for coming, making it an issue. I understand it. My fellow town counselors understand it, and we're going to fix it one way or the other. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Schnep.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to thank Mr. Hetzel for his remarks about our police force and Chief McDonald. I have had many occasions to see how important their compassionate work is with the more, less fortunate people in our community, and I believe that our town's investment in the community, oh, boy, it's the CIU, and also the CCIT training is incredibly vital, and I hope we support that when we get onto our operating budget.
Counselor Cullen.
Yes, thank you, Charlie, for coming out and speaking your mind. It's definitely the town turns a corner when the chief is no longer our chief, but I think one of the most poignant things you said in your letter was that this cannot be the burden of the police department alone, because that budget is swelling, and we're paying for that when we have social services agencies in our town that might be able to be doing more and be as productive as the police have been. And I think that's something that this council takes a pretty serious look at on a regular basis. But, you know, Chief McDonald is one of the reasons I ran for town council to begin with, and you as a neighbor and coming into the market all the time. I believe you were there at that very first meeting in my apartment above the market when he came to talk about the community needs that we had, and how they weren't being met, and the fear that we had. And then, over the course of the next four or five years, he systematically checked things off the list until we all felt a lot better, and that's something that I'll never forget. I think he's done so much for Hyannis, and he's made Hyannis hopeful of a brighter future, and that Hyannis can direct itself, be the driver on the bus, and not just a passenger on the bus of the future. And that's what he's really brought to me, and that's the inspiration that he gives me really, still now, when I move forward and think about the Hyannis of the future. And I'm sure the next police chief will have that same vision for us, that Hyannis is the heartbeat of the Cape, and needs to be a strong heartbeat of the Cape. It can't be a passive rider on the bus. So, thank you for coming in.
Counselor Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ditto to what the counselors have already said, I won't add to that. I just want to make a comment about the heat in the room. I believe on schedule, regardless of what the temperature is, the furnace, I believe, is off, Mark. Is the furnace off? Yeah. So that last week, when I made visits at town offices, some of the staff were wearing their coats. So, those days are gone, but the heat, I believe, the furnace is off. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Dagwone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Charlie, I want to thank you also, Mr. Hetzel, for openly thanking Police Chief, so that the community can hear this. There, there's quite a few acclimates and awards that he probably will receive, recognition he'll see, receive within the next so many months, for his services. But I'd like to say that I feel as though he's left our town in, in good, good shape, and the next person that steps up, I feel confident that that person will move forward and will have a police department in the town that's willing to work, work with them, and that makes me feel positive about him leaving.
Any other counselors? All right, well, thank you very much, and we will move into Town Manager Communications. Maybe, Mark, you want to maybe give it thirty seconds to the Blishpoint folks are trying to move out quietly? Thank you. (laughing). All right, Mark, welcome.
Good evening. Mark Els, Town Manager. This is the Town Manager's report for the period of April 6 through April 26, 2008. We are proceeding with the tasks in the Budget Action Calendar for FY19 as scheduled. The FY 2019 Capital Budget and FY19 through '23 Capital Improvement Plan has been submitted to the council and posted on the town website under the Finance Division, FY19 Capital Improvement. We are in receipt of the Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee's report on the FY 2019 Capital Budget. I've attached it, I believe it was also sent to all of you prior to that. The, as, I, I had the, I had the opportunity to meet with Finance Director Milne and the Chair of the Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee. They gave a favorable report on, on our proposed capital improvement budget, and as always, gave us constructive recommendations for us to consider as we move forward in future budgets. We, Director Milne and I have already talked about how to incorporate those. We typically have done that in the past as well. So, they always give a very positive, constructive, you know, remarks, and it's extremely helpful as a outside party looking into what we're planning for. And I'd be remiss not to mention the work that went into the development of the budget with Mark Milne and our department heads and our staff, and particularly the members of the Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee, who spent many hours reviewing and commenting on these numerous projects. Town Council shall continue the FY 2019 Capital Budget orders this evening. In accordance with Section 6-2 of the Town Charter, we have submitted printed copies of the town's FY 2019 Operating Budget to the Town Council, and have posted said documents on town website homepage, under notifications, FY 2019 Operating Budget booklet. The Director of Finance and I will present a summary of the FY 2019 Operating Budget at your next Town Council meeting on May 3. You'll also be reading in the orders that evening. We continue working with the Mass. Department of Fish and Wildlife, and USGS, and Department of Environmental Protection Water Supply Staff regarding future potential water supply wells proposed on the 250-acre parcel northeast of the Hyannis water system. The town is coordinating with DEP Water Supply and anticipates conducting its water quality sampling in the next two weeks. We also, so that's good, we progressed to the point where we're going to actually pull the samples. We met on April 9 with USGS to discuss the preliminary assessment. We had reported, we had planned to do that, that was successful, and, and they're proceeding, looking at locating potential future water supply wells on the Fish and Wildlife parcel, and, and we're progressing right on schedule, so we're pleased with that. You know, we expect to reconvene the full group later this spring to just talk about status and see, you know, what, what issues may exist as we progress with this, so we're pleased with this. Concurrent with this, as we've said in the past, there's a much broader evaluation of future potential water supply sites. This is one of them, but obviously, this has a unique, you know, aspect to it in that it's fish and wildlife land, and it comes with many constraints. So, you know, we're dealing with both, but we're also, you know, focusing on that one because of those, you know, unique aspects of that potential opportunity for us. We are proceeding with the hiring process for the position of Chief of Police. I guess I'll pause for a second and say to you, the Chief McDonald's last official day is May 2. His years of service are certainly recognized by all of us in our community. Those who have had the privilege of serving with him know that he's a unique individual that, that won't be replaced, but will be replaced with another highly qualified individual that will carry forward the vision for our community. So, he, in his very quiet way, said to me, "Don't let them plan anything for me, Mark. Promise me that." And I said, "Okay, I promise you that." So, I know that he will depart quietly, but you all can choose how you want to communicate with him on that. He knows we appreciate his service. We've conducted an interview of the candidates with the assistance of a panel of our staff and members of the public. My next step is to meet individually with each of the candidates. There are, there are three, and I expect to bring forward a choice shortly, and I'll keep you advised as I progress. I'm not sure why that's buzzing. We continue our discussion with Vineyard Wind relative to their proposal to construct transmission facilities that would interconnect with a proposed offshore wind farm in federal waters. We are scheduled to meet tomorrow to further discuss the host agreement, and I'll keep you advised as we progress on that matter. I put in this, this Town Manager Communication, an economic development report, we're going to do that quarterly, so that you can take a look at what, within our planning development and our economic, economic development division, we are doing, and, correct this for me? All right. Sarah, should I pause for a moment?
Yeah.
I'm good to go? Okay. So, I, I, I hope that you have the time to take a look at that, any feedback that you may have, any other areas of interest, certainly let me know, and we'll make sure that on a regular basis, we're reporting out on our progress in that area. Cape Cod Commission approved the redesignation of the downtown Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone. The town's application was approved under the new streamlined regional regulations that were approved by the Assembly of Delegates earlier this month. The renewed Growth Incentive Zone designation has no end date, instead requiring the town to report to the Commission on progress towards strategic planning goals every five years. The Growth Incentive Zone provides an incentive for growth and an incentive in the downtown Hyannis by waiving requirements of the Cape Cod Commission review of the larger development projects. I'd like to just take a moment, though, and note that we've had a change relevant to our representation on the Cape Cod Commission. And Royden Richardson, who has served us in many capacities in our community, here on the Town Council, as a Cape Cod Commissioner, in many other civic roles and community-based roles, has left us in representing the town, and in his place, Fred Charragotis has been appointed to serve in that capacity. So, we will, we will say thank you to Roy. He did want me to note that if you have another committee that you might want him to serve on, he is interested, and I thank Fred for accepting, and I have moved forward with... on, he, he is interested, and I thank Fred for accepting, and I have moved forward with appointing Fred, it's a Town Manager appointment, and I have moved forward with appointing Fred Charragotis to that position. The Housing Choice Initiative rewards municipal, I'm sorry, municipalities that they have produced more than 500 new housing units in the last five years, and that they have adopted best practices related to housing production that will sustain a 21st century workforce and increase access to opportunity for Massachusetts residents. Communities that have achieved the Housing Choice designation will have exclusive access to apply for new Housing Choice Capital Grant, a new Housing Choice Capital Grant Program, and receive bonus points or other consideration to certain state grant programs, including technical assistance by the state as we move forward with various housing and, housing initiatives. The Planning and Development Department will submit an application for designation by April 30 deadline, and Department of Housing anticipates that it will announce the list of 2018 Housing Choice communities this spring. Attached is a draft Town of Barnstable Special Events on Town Property Procedure Guidebook. Please note Section 3.2, relevant to special events requesting beer and wine. Please review, and we will discuss further before finalizing the procedures. We've been discussing having a formal guidebook. We've also been requested to consider, under certain circumstances, permitting use or, or permitting beer and wine on a limited basis, limited temporary basis. So we have dra, we have draft regulations or draft procedures, and I thought before going too far with this, I should share them with the Town Council, and you can give me your feedback. If, if you'd like, we can do a workshop on it, and then we can make a decision how we might proceed. Many of them are existing standard procedures, but there are, based on requests of our community, you know, some other new areas in there. So I'd like you to take a look at it, and we can go through it step by step at your convenience. Wanted to note that the Harbor Master Office and Welcome Center at Bismarck Park are officially opening tomorrow, and I've, I've just listed some bullet points in case anybody asks, especially the Hyannis Councilors. They might be wondering, you know, it's going to get a lot busier, certainly as we head into the better weather. It's always great to see our various facilities, our marinas, our, you know, Bismarck Park, and hopefully next are be our beaches. So those are all, you know, significant milestones every year for us as that occurs. That's the end of my presentation. I am going to ask David Anthony to come up to provide an update on the Kmart Plaza RFP and also to address next steps on the tax possession property sale. So would you like to ask me questions now, or would you like to?
Yeah, why don't we do, anyone have questions for the Town Manager before we get an update from David Anthony? Counselor Cullen?
Hi, thank you for the presentation. Who was on the panel for interviewing the police chief candidates?
A representative from the Youth Commission, representative from the Fire Departments, representative from our School Department, representatives from across our community. I tried to, I tried to get individuals who represented well the demographics of our community. I can get you the list, so we're 10, 10 people on the panel.
Yes. Counselor Rap Grissette?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, Mark.
Hi.
Since you brought to the attention 3.2 on this booklet, I'm curious why schools weren't listed on there. For, for instance, the high school, the Performing Arts Center. I know that's one of the drawbacks the Symphony has, that they can't serve wine during intermission. Why isn't the school listed? Or any other community buildings?
I, I am, I, as, I guess as Town Manager, I wanted to try this initially on a limited basis. It's, it's something that can be modified as we move forward. We don't allow this currently. In many of our spaces, we do, under some of our lease agreements that we have, for example, at the golf course, for example. So I wanted to try it on a limited basis, see how it works, keep it controlled, and then assess it. Jumping to schools, I'm not quite sure, I, I think that may be beyond my authority, first of all, and secondly, it may be in, it may not comply with different rules and, and regulations that they have relevant to, you know, youth-related activities like MIAA and others. So I think we need to be mindful at our youth and community center, you know, certainly in our schools and in any location. But if it isn't appropriate, we should proceed with, not do it, or proceed with caution. I think in this case, I felt fairly confident that this would be a good way to start, assess it after a year, see how it's working, and learn from that, and either continue it or, or modify it. Yep?
Counselor Schnep?
Mr. President, thank you, Mark. Glad to see that we're going to be applying to be a Housing Choice community. Would you be able to give us an update either today or next week on the status of the H-DIP? I believe we approved that application back in March. It was the housing development, was to allow for incentivizing market rate housing.
Yeah, I'll have Elizabeth Jenkins to do that at our next meeting on the 3rd. Yes.
Counselor Cullen?
Yeah, just to follow up on Counselor Rap Grissette, I know that the concession at Calma Beach, the Wimpy's concession there, I mean, I don't know that they'd be interested in it, but that, to me, would be a place that would be perfect to allow a beer and wine license, as long as we're under the same concept of people leasing out town property. And, you know, I think anything with a concession like that, if we could capitalize on our beaches and have that be, it has a seating area, obviously. I don't know how the regulations work beyond that, but that would be something that I would think would be, we should, something we should consider, especially since they're open past the evening hours now, whatever, you know? Thank you.
I think we can have discussions about any and all. I think with each, we'll find there's a unique aspect to it. You'll see when you read these regulations that these, these, you know, typically one-event, one-day type licenses require that they have the appropriate security, and as we broaden to a facility such as that, there will be different issues. So we really, I think we need to be mindful of that and, and make sure where we do it, it's safe and appropriate.
Vice President Crocker?
This is like a Christmas list, I have to tell you, Mark. This is just a stunning group of work by staff, and everybody needs to be commended. Start with the capital budget. We know we're going to get awards for the way we are proceeding with our budgeting. We're going to wrap up the capital budget today. We're headed on to operations. Mass Fish and Wildlife, we've said it once, twice, and not enough. Whatever we do to get water for Hyannis is going to be our legacy here. To have them agree to allow us to test sounds like such a small step, but it is monumental. So hats off to yourself. I know Dan's been up there with you, and it's just a fabulous effort to get this forward. We have infrastructure there, we'll be producing water if the tests run out, as we suspect, at, at an affordable rate to make an adjustment from the bad well situation. It's a fabulous opportunity for the Hyannis Fire, I should say, the Hyannis Water Department. We cannot have people come to Cape Cod Hospital and be handed bottled water. So guess what? You're, you're, you're right on track getting this problem resolved for, for the community and for really a stigma on all of Cape Cod. So thank you tremendously. We know the police chief program is as scheduled. You've kept us abreast all the way along, excited about that. Vineyard Wind, you know, we've gone the distance with Cape Wind, and now we are facing Vineyard Wind, and we have a great amount of commitment by several councilors up here to say, "We need to look hard at this, we need to see how we can participate," and we've done a 360, and we're sitting down talking about a, you know, an interconnection and a host agreement. That's a fabulous statement for who we are and why we are. We had obstacles while we weren't supporting in the past, we have different issues now. It doesn't mean we're home with it, but it means that we're, we're very honorable people who say, "When the problems go away, we're here to help with solutions," and bringing forward a host agreement is a very strong statement in that direction. Cape Cod Commission, we got over the hurdle of even a renewal aspect. We know we've done well with the GIZ, we know we're going to do better with the GIZ. Just an excellent opportunity. Whenever we step up and try to get more designation like Housing Choice, just a fabulous opportunity, again, bring forward the growth in housing that we need for our community. The liquor issue, I mean, you know, we're coming out of the Stone Age. We're, we're, we're facing a way of putting together special events so everybody can enjoy and celebrate the community we are. So nothing but applause for that effort as well. And you're taking the right steps. They're small steps, but they're the right steps. It's going to be controlled, it's going to have answers, and it's going to come with conditions, but everybody's going to test the waters, understand it, and we have legacy programs here that will come back year and year again and, and then make it a very inviting atmosphere in our neighborhoods. Harbor Master Office, always a great spot. We built a great building, and I'm happy to see our Harbor Masters here, and we're, we're headed off in the right way. And then we're going to finish with the coup de grace, and it's getting the Kmart Plaza out the door. We have our friends from the airport with us tonight, but what an accomplishment again. So I, I, I think Christmas has arrived in, in April here. This is a fabulous report. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated. Mr. Anthony, how are you this evening?
Doing quite well, thank you very much. Good evening to all the councilors. While I am the one standing up here at the podium to talk about this, there were, there was a big group of staff from all sorts of different corners of the town that really helped produce the request for proposal, and I am pleased to announce that it is on the town's bid and RFP website as we speak. The first advertisement will be on Sunday. The proposals will be due on August 31st. There's a lot to be done over the next 120 days or so, including advertising in over 15 different national publications regarding real estate and development in an attempt to try to bring this 25-acre parcel that really is in the heart of the commercial sector, right on Route 132, to as many different people as we can to try to get as much interest as we can. I don't think it can be understated that this particular parcel, where it's located and the potential that's there, really has the opportunity to set a tone and set a direction for perhaps the next 50 to 75 years. What is done here is going to affect and have a trickle effect all around, even to the point where it's going to have an impact here on downtown Hyannis. So all of the work that's been done by staff to bring this forward, starting back in September, when we took upon kind of an interesting task of just trying to assemble acquisition documents. Anytime you go back and try to have a property, it was taken in 1941 for the purpose of expanding a runway that was eventually abandoned. The land was still held by the town, the inhabitants of the town, for airport expansion, but it, that, that never materialized. And to go back in and try to find those documents, you'd think today with technology and Google, that's wonderful, but you're really talking about going through boxes and going through filing cabinets to make sure we have everything that we needed to do. Once we assembled those documents, we had to come up with a strategy. The reality is, is that the current lease doesn't expire until 2024. So we have five to six years left before the current lease expires, but how can we incentivize a new developer to come in and assume a leading role and perhaps start their permitting very early, because that could be a two- or three-year process? How could we encourage them to come in, potentially negotiate with the current tenant, and get that new, that existing lease terminated so that the redevelopment can begin anew earlier? Certainly, we are familiar with some of the challenges that have been happening to brick and mortar. We've seen the Toys R Us, we've seen Bonton, we've heard of Sears, they've all been in the news. The, the athletic store that was there has been empty for quite some time. So there's some challenges with online, online purchasing, and what does that mean for the future of this property? To sit and wait for six years and then go through a three-year permitting process really would not allow the town and the airport to take advantage of this. On top of that, this is a potential revenue source for the airport, which I think it could use. So ultimately, what we decided to do was begin to chip away at this, and we actually came up with a, not one document, but three. There's the request for proposal, which is really the rules of the game, on how you would get the very first document, the first key document, which is an agreement, which would give that developer some standing to be able to do that work while the current lease continues towards its expiration date. And then finally, there would be a brand-new 49-year lease that would be signed at either the conclusion of the existing lease or at some date prior to that, if we were able to get that negotiations handled with the current tenant. Now certainly, the current tenant may have interests, so we'll have to see how this plays out. But I think understanding those trends in development were incredibly important. We needed to be sensitive to the fact that people needed to come in with creative ideas, but at the same time, we needed to retain control as to what was going to happen at that location. And it's not just our zoning, it's not just our regulatory agreement, which you had an opportunity to have a role in this past January. It's also the FAA, because that airport property is there, there are certain requirements. So we actually had two kind of restrictions on either end, and we had to come up with something that was going to work in between those two ends. We actually had a meeting with the FAA in February to have a sit-down to talk with them about what the issues were going to be, and that's where we decided on the 49 years. That's where we were able to identify exactly what kind of requirements these developers were going to have to do as far as height regulations, what they were going to be allowed to do, and how they were going to meet a fair market value that was going to come in that met what the FAA was looking for, for those grant assurances. When they pay for money at the airport, they want to make sure that airport land has a fair return. So there are a number of layers of involvement that are here. The next key piece in all of this is going to be rolling out that advertising blanket into all the different publications. Some are online, some are print documents, they have different start dates and different ads. Once that's in, 60 days from today, might not be exactly 60 days, but in the June timeframe, we're going to have our pre-bid conference right here at 10:00 AM, I believe it's on a Monday in June. And what that's going to allow is developers to come in, ask questions. We're going to be able to go through all of the, the documents that we have. The agreement is eight to 12 pages, somewhere in that range. The lease is three times that size, because there's a lot in it. So really, what we're going to need to do here is, is collect questions, create answer sheets, issue probably one or two different addenda in order to answer those questions, and then, once we get the proposals in, then we would move into the evaluation stage. This has been a tremendous effort. It has been, in many cases, a unique kind of procurement. We've had a lot of input from a lot of great people to try to tell us what they think, and we've been trying to incorporate all that in. And certainly, planning and development has played a key role, legal for both the airport and for the town. Procurement has played its role, and now we're kind of in charge of the process. But ultimately, the airport and the Airport Commission are really looking for this key piece of property to bring forward some good returns as soon as possible, and to take that particular plaza and turn it into something quite unique and special that will help define that area.
Thank you for the presentation, and I, I can't thank you enough, you and your staff, and Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn was help, helpful definitely in leading this effort, and Town Manager Mark Els, our Airport Manager Bud Brielle, and Assistant Airport Manager Katie Service, and the Airport Commission, and Vice President Crocker. You know, this has been a topic of conversation going back years, actually, and we really, starting in September is where we kind of got started in, in earnest on it, and starting from those documents which you're talking about, which I remember looking at back in September, to get to the document which I had a chance to review today, just fabulous work all the way around, and it is a, there's no other property like it that the town owns. So I'm very excited to see the proposals that come forward, and just long overdue. It's, it's going to be a win-win all the way around for the town, the airport, and for the community. So really, thank you, thank you for all the efforts. Any questions for our Director of Procurement? Just thank yous all around.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing the, the bids.
I, I know that the Town Manager had kind of teed up the whole, what's the status of the tax sale?
Yep.
Possessions. Actually, sitting down with our attorney tomorrow to have a face-to-face meeting. We're going to be scheduling purchase and sale meetings directly with the clients, probably over the next two weeks. We had to go back in to take a look at the purchase and sale document, make sure that it was exactly where it needed to be. There was a revision or two that needed to be done. What we have done is held all of the, all of the bids that have come in, and we're going to roll out the plan to the individual people. out the plan to the individual people. Wherever there have been multiple bidders, we will return the low bids and retain the top two. Where there's only one bid, obviously, that's relatively easy. We've had a couple of properties that have had some unique things pop up. We've had abutters come and tell us some things that, quite frankly, we didn't know. We've had an encroachment issue that we've had to deal with. We've had, we found an interesting discretion in where a boundary was listed between two different documents. So, we've been trying to figure out how we can correct those before we sit down and move forward. But at this point in time, I believe that we have a roadmap for the next 30 days and to be able to bring this to a close, and hopefully, to be able to collect at the closings revenue that has been promised as the high bids. That would be a tremendous achievement, and it would allow us to leverage our way into some of the more complicated properties that we have. If these were the easy ones, I can only imagine how the rest are going to go.
Well, we try to keep it entertaining, you know, right? What's the estimated revenue?
It's just over $500,000 of one-time cash sales, and based on a rough estimate using the currently listed assessed values, it would be between $10,000 and $12,000 worth of new taxes that would come back on. One thing that gets missed in all of this is really the key element of taking those properties off of our risk palette. We would not have liability on that property. Something as simple as discovering someone has dumped eight gallons of gasoline on that particular small piece of property could lead to a DEP cleanup and a lot of money. So, by putting these properties back onto the tax rolls, we also transfer that liability to the new owners, and that's not insignificant.
Absolutely. Again, great effort all the way around. We talked about it, I think, at the last meeting, but again, this effort goes back when Councilor Rapace said he was president when we formed the original committee to start looking at this and organizing it, working closely with you, and obviously, our town management and leadership, just a tremendous effort and to put it out in such a professional way, and we have a lot more to do, there's a lot more properties, but really tremendous effort. So, thank you, thank you again.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone have anything? Councilor Dagewan?
Thank you, David, a great presentation.
Thank you.
I sat in some of those meetings as well, and I think we've done a great job with it. But I want to know, would you be coming back to us, which I assume you will, and maybe giving us an update on properties that were sold or purchased from bidders through this process? And I think I'm concerned about some of the properties. The reason why I'm asking is we still have a housing issue here in town, and for me, it would be interesting to see people who purchased this, some of these lots are interested in doing some kind of affordable housing or housing units in place of what's there now. Am I clear?
Oh, no, I think we can address that. There is, I believe, an opportunity with the property that we have that is not currently developed to investigate some opportunities for housing down the road with the many different agencies around Habitat for Humanity, some of the other entities that are out there. These particular properties that we put forward, again, were kind of the easy ones, and many of them are rather small in size, two-tenths of an acre, three-tenths of an acre, not what you would typically consider a two-acre parcel that could be easily developed into a larger house. The thought here was that these parcels, in many cases, were going to be valuable to the abutters themselves, so that someone who'd get two-tenths of an acre next door to their house might either sell the property, get more for it, it would come in, someone would redevelop that house itself, put on a garage, put in a swimming pool, relocate a septic system, add a bedroom. That kind of development doesn't add a new house, but it allows a current house to be expanded, and there's another tax layer associated with that, but that really wasn't the idea here. This was as much to come up with a process, so that what we could do is have an idea about what are the hurdles that we have to do to identify how we acquired it, how do we do the title searches, how do we do all of that? We really hadn't done this before, so this was a learning experience, as much for me as for anyone else. I think in the next rounds of opportunities, there may be a way to address some of that, the housing shortages, and there may be some creative ways to partner with people in that regard. But these really were not necessarily under that umbrella of the type of property, and we selected them on purpose for that.
So, these are smaller units, smaller lots?
Absolutely, yes.
And there are more that are a little bit bigger that might address some of the other concerns that we have about housing in the town.
I believe that we have some, yeah. I believe we have some bigger lots. I also believe that we have some lots that partnering with the right kind of entities, housing could be dealt with. That's a little bit out of my area of expertise. Certainly, I'm more of a process person who's going to help this get done, but we have a good team of people who I'm sure will be able to come up with some different opportunities.
Again, just to congratulate your committee and the Chair, who, Mr. Wallace, who moved this along as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation.
And you alluded to it, but obviously, these properties are also selected, not just to kind of form a process, we're kind of first time through this, but generate funds so that you can go back and do the research and the title cleanup on a number of the properties that we do have that need some work. So, this is a way to fund that effort, so they can be ready to go out for sale as well. Anyone else? All right, well, thank you very much. All right. Vice President Crocker, we have two sets of minutes to approve. Can we act on the minutes of March 22nd, 2018, which is our joint workshop with the Board of Health?
Yes, Mr. President. In our packets tonight, we have the Town of Boswell, Town Council, Board of Health Joint Workshop on Marijuana. It was March 22nd, 2018, and I propose we accept the minutes as drafted.
I have a second. All those in favor approving the minutes of the March 22nd, 2018 joint workshop? And that is unanimous. And Vice President Crocker, can we act on the minutes of the Town Council Meeting of April 5th, 2018?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. On our scheduled meeting of April 5th, 2018, the Town Council met. The minutes have been recorded, they're in your packets, and I move that they be approved as drafted.
I have a second. All those in favor approving the minutes of Town Council Meeting from April 5th, 2018? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Council Communications, Correspondence, Announcements, I just want to first recognize Councilor Dagewan for a great event with Open Streets over the weekend. She worked a very long day down there. I saw her down there, and I just wanted to thank her for the effort she put into that event. I was able to go down there with my immediate family and extended family. We had a family birthday party for my nephew, and, you know, the kids had a great time, and it was, the weather cooperated, you know, fantastically as well. And I saw some other councilors down there, I saw Town Manager Mark Els there as well, and I just want to thank you for the work you put into that, Councilor Dagewan. Anyone else have anything? Councilor Rapaceetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of announcements. It's Art Week, and the Mid-Cape Cultural Council is celebrating. They'd like you to join them to honor their 2018 grant recipients and the kickoff of the High Arts Discovery Walk fundraiser, and it's this Sunday, April 29th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Guyer Barn, which is right here on South Street, 250 South Street. Stop in any time between 2:00 and 4:00 and talk with the grantees about their projects, and they're going to have live performances and art on display, so that's a good time to be had. Also, I'd like to announce that on Saturday, May 12th, from 10:00 to noon, there's going to be a spring cleanup in Katuit. The Civic Association is hosting this. They're going to offer vests and gloves and anything else you need. If you could meet at Lowell Park at 10:00 a.m., you can be dispatched to areas in the village that need to be cleaned up. For information, you can contact them at katuutcivicassociation@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone other councilors? Councilor Dagewan?
Yes, I have a few things. First, I'd like to congratulate the recent graduates of the Inside Boswell Government Course that has been open for residents to learn more about how our town operates. The recent ceremony gave certificates to 30 graduates. I think that's probably the largest class. And the ceremony was on the same evening that the officer was shot, and so it really didn't get a lot of people, people weren't able to attend. But I had an opportunity to go down to, just to socialize with some of the graduates. They had a little event down at Columbo's. So, anyway, just wanted to say that I think that was one of the largest classes. I also want to thank you for just recognizing me for the Hyannis Open Street, but I only work the kids' zone, which is on the Village Green. And throughout, from 12:00 to 5:00, I, throughout the day, we had at least 5,000 kids that came on the Village Green. But our committee had a lot going on on the Main Street as well, all kinds of bands and the old fire trucks, just a lot. But our next event will be Sunday, May 20th, from 12:00 to 5:00 on Main Street, and again, we'll have activities for the kids on the Village Green, and we're looking at trying to do a senior zone, possibly, if we can pull it all together, at the JFK Museum. We also, I wanted to say that the Greater Hyannis Civic Association will host a forum on the proposed Performing Arts Center, the proposed, which is proposed for the golf course next to the Resort and Conference Center. And it says all should come out to get their questions answered or at least get them on the table. They have solicited questions and concerns from our membership and from the abutters from that area. So, really, we'd like for people to come out and address that, their concerns about the proposed Performing Arts Center. It's going to be Saturday, April 28th, at 10:30 a.m. in the Hyannis Port Room on the second floor of the Resort and Conference Center, which is off of Scudder Ave, for those who may not know where that's located. And lastly, the Third Annual Achievers Benefit is Thursday, May 17th, at Willow Bend Country Club, and it'll be held from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and the tickets are $95. And I can remember when they first started, they were $45, $40. And it seems to be the last few years the event has been held on our Town Council night, when we have a Town Council meeting, so many of us have not been able to go. I think the first event they had, we had quite a few councilors that attended that event. And I am, would like to ask for any councilors who would like to join me in purchasing a ticket to donate towards this benefit, to help these achievers, especially those seniors who received some small scholarship, to support them. Although I'm not able to go, I still would like to support the group, and $95 is a lot of money, and we did hear some of these young people speak, so we know the circumstances that they're in, and many of them, it's difficult for their parents to buy a ticket to even go to the benefit. So, if anybody would like to join with me, just talk with me later and help towards, maybe we can get a table or something for some of the parents to at least attend this and support these young people from our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Tinsley?
Thank you. I just have a couple of quick things. First, more on a personal nature, but it has to do with Hyannis Youth and Community Center. I actually went down there last week to get the family plan, and I just wanted a shout out to the employee that helped me, and I'll just, her first name was Lily, and how wonderful her training obviously was top-notch, because she just answered every question, she answered it well, she was friendly, polite, and just, really just made me want to go use the facility right away, even though that's, my wife's been using it, and I'll get there one of these days. But, so I just wanted to make a comment about that. Secondly, met with Ms. Bennett, she's on the Board of Trustees for the Hyannis Library, and I know she's got some other meetings planned with other councilors, that very, very early stages of looking to rebuild part of the Hyannis Public Library. It's obviously going to be a very, a big project. What we're talking about is the Twombly Wing, I think I pronounced it right, with upgrading, remodeling the Hinckley and Eagleston Wings. So, if anybody is interested, again, it's very early on in the process, but reach out to me, and we'd very much appreciate any assistance we can get. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Councilor Snap?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to also do a shout-out. Last night, we had a well-attended meeting in Marson's Mills. Several staff from DPW, Rod Steen, Paul Graves, and Elizabeth Jenkins were there to present the, I guess, a tenure plan in terms of trying to redo the roads in our lovely Marson's Mills Village, and I have to commend the staff for being so attentive to all the questions and being very open-minded and flexible about some of the suggestions that were brought up last night. And I also wanted to thank Councilor Levet for making sure that meeting happened. On Tuesday next week is our Marson's Mills Village Association meeting, and we will be having some discussion on a couple of properties that are of interest in the Mills, and that might come before the council. Thank you. Oh, and that meeting's at the Burgess House at 6:00.
All right. Anyone else? Councilor Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to let folks know that on May 30th, the Boswell DPW will be hosting a public meeting to share with everyone who lives in Precinct One, as well as the town, this final edition of the Streetscape Project for the village. So, that will be at 6:30 p.m. at the Harbor View Room, which is in the old jail at the top of Cape Cod Commission area. So, again, June, excuse me, May 30th at 6:30. Thank you.
Great. Any other councilors? No? All right. We will move into the orders of the day. Vice President Crocker, under Old Business, could you read item 2018, dash 074, and open the public hearing and continue it to May 3rd, 2018, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Under Old Business, open the public hearing and continue it to May 3rd, originally introduced in 3/15/18, again, in April 5th and April 26th. Article 2018, 074, appropriation of loan order in the amount of $1 million for the purpose of funding the Katuit Bay Entrance Channel dredging project as outlined in the fiscal years 219 through fiscal year 223, capital improvement plans as written.
I have a second. All those in favor of opening the public hearing and continuing to May 3rd, 2018, item 2018, dash 074? And that is unanimous. I want to skip ahead a little bit, I wanted to invite up the airport. Sorry, Dan. They have two things, so we'll get them out. So, if our Airport Manager and Assistant Airport Manager would like to come forward? I wanted to close with you, Dan, you know?
I know.
I was trying to catch your eye out there, but give you some signal, but figured at the end I'll just surprise you, I'll be come up, unless you want to stay for a couple more hours.
Thank you.
All right. Vice President Crocker, could you please read and open the public hearing on item 2018, dash 104, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Old Business, open for a public hearing, needs a majority vote, originally introduced in April 5th and April 26th. 2018, dash 104, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $449,900 for the fiscal year 2018 airport capital budget for the purposes of funding various airport capital improvement projects as written.
Second? And the floor is yours.
Thank you for having us here tonight.
Welcome.
I think Bud's trying to figure that out. I'm going to skip through the first few slides, because I know you guys have a long night this evening. The appropriation order is for the $449,900. It's for various airport capital improvement projects that are actually going to be state-funded. Back in March, I believe it was March 1st, the state reached out, State Air Knox Division reached out to a number of airports. reached out to a number of airports within the region and asked them if they had any projects that they wanted to move forward. They had a few projects within the state that did not move forward as they had hoped. They had some permitting issues with some of their projects. So they had about three point five million dollars that they wanted to use and spend before the end of the fiscal year, which is June thirtieth, or they would lose those funds. So we immediately reached out to them. We gave them ten possible projects that we wanted to move forward with. The projects that you see here tonight are typically projects that would not be funded by Mast dot Aeronautics Division. They would not be funded typically by the FAA. Most of the costs that you see here would be borne by the airport. I'll go through each one. But the very top one, the hangar drainage improvement projects, you saw that in our CIP submittal. That was a project that we were looking at dividing into a five-year period. We were going to do it in phases. The state said, we'll go ahead and we'll pick up that project for you. So the table that you see here, the projects, as you can see on the left-hand side, we have the four projects that are presented to you this evening. We also have another project that is not being presented because the Mast dot is paying one hundred percent for our annual airfield painting project. That project, because we are not moving forward with that, and because of other projects that we've opted to hold off on, we're able to meet our matching share, which is the eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. The total project is four forty-nine, so I think that's a pretty good win for the airport with the state picking up eighty percent of those projects that they normally wouldn't fund. This first project is the hangar drainage improvement project. The hangar itself is owned by the airport. However, we do lease that property out to Cape Air. We also store some of our snow removal equipment in that hangar. Cape Air uses it for their IT facilities, for their fleet, for their entire fleet and their headquarters at the airport. They also have their training facilities located there. That's where they have their Cessna four oh two simulator for all of their training, for all of their pilots. And this particular piece of property, unfortunately, it is at the lowest point on the north ramp. So anytime we get severe rain, we are seeing severe flooding. The way that this property is probably about a foot and a half lower than the other properties on, on the north part of the ramp. So we have seen significant issues. We've taken a couple of projects where we've included some French drains around the building, but that's not doing the trick. So we've opted to look at putting in an underground storage system to deal with the flooding that we've had in this, in particular area. And that's what we'd like to move forward on. So that's the two hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred dollars. Next one? Sure. Thank you, Bud. The, that project, as I had indicated previously, we were going to phase it over a five-year period. We've asked our consultants to put together those five phases that we looked at. We got our bid documents back today. We got the lowest bidder back today. And the two hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred dollars that we have estimated for that, some of the elements, we might not be able to move forward on because they go above that two hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred dollars. So we have two elements as add alternates to the bid. They came in a little bit higher. So at some point in time, if we feel that we still need to put those other elements back into the project, we may be back in front of you at some other point in time to finish that off. Right now, this two hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred gets the bulk of the project completed. Cafe patio and door addition. We just recently, in October of two thousand and seventeen, opened our doors to Cape Cod Coffee at the airport. As you know, the airport is very seasonal. It has been difficult for us to keep a restaurant at the facility. But it is something that is very important for our flights that do pick up in the summertime, specifically JetBlue when they come in seasonally. We'd like to be able to offer our passengers some type of facility where they can get a cup of coffee, they can get something to eat. So Cape Cod Coffee is there now in the facility. They are very proactive. They have come to us and they said, we really need a way to entice people to come to our facility, not only when they're taking a flight out, but when they're in, in the general area and want to be able to come and visit the cafe. So they've done two things. They've asked us to go ahead and put in a outdoor patio so that you can have that cafe feel at the airport. I think it will provide a little bit more of a unique space at, in the terminal for Cape Cod Coffee. In addition to that, they did seek to get their liquor license that has been approved. And I think that the combination of them trying to open up their doors and trying to get more activity at the airport, I'm hoping that within time, that will be a habitual stop for many people to use the cafe. We're also been coming up with a lot of different ideas of how to entice people to come to the cafe for different events. We've talked about having paint and pour parties or different events on a monthly basis. So people get used to coming into the terminal, coming into the airport, and getting used to the fact that Cape Cod Coffee is now at the terminal. The next project is forestry mulcher. As you know, we have over six hundred acres at the airfield. We have a lot of trees and brush that we need to maintain on a regular basis. The FAA does require that we maintain our fence line. The piece of equipment that we have now does an okay job, but this forestry mulcher will allow us to do a better job, spend less time in cutting down those trees and some brush around our fence line. So with Mast dot's help, we are purchasing this piece of equipment that will be an attachment to something that we already have at the airfield. Again, listed there are the cost breakdown for the project. We have a building on the airfield that stores all of our snow removal equipment, as well as our firefighting equipment. That building was built in nineteen ninety-seven. We have many overhead doors that need replacement. The project itself, we have pushed for several years. We really need to do something with our facility here and, and basically implement quite a few upgrades. The doors have been something that Bud has set up in our capital improvement plan over the past several years to replace one or two doors each year, and we have been doing that. Mast dot came back to us, this was one of our projects, and they, they said, we'll pay for all eleven doors that you need to get replaced. So that's an eighty percent match. So we said, fine, we're going to go ahead and, and go with it. The bids will be going out for that project next week.
Thank you for that. And did you just want to touch on kind of the timeline for this, too? You're on a truncated timeline, just to explain that.
Sure. We've been asked to have the projects completed by June thirtieth. It's a tight schedule for us. We've been working with the procurement office. They've been fantastic in helping us, the town procurement office, in getting these things ready to move forward. We do have some funds that we've set aside over the past several years that, that have been approved by town council for terminal and building improvements. We are going to be using those to get some of the long lead items, such as some of the doors and, and the garage bay doors for the ARF building. So we are all aware of the timelines. We've stressed that to everyone that put in a bid, that this is a hard and fast June thirtieth date. And the comments that we got back is that there was no issue, they could move forward with that. We made that very evidently clear in all of our procurement packages that went out.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. So any members of the public that wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? As you name it. Counselor, discussion on this item. Counselor Neary.
President, I just have two questions, Miss Service. This, the first item of the hangar drainage improvements, are you confident that the two forty-one will eliminate the water infiltration? I mean, at a minimum? The pictures that you show are pretty dismal, so.
The, the system that we're installing is an underground storage system, if you will. How they, how our engineers have designed it is to, basically, the full build-out is a hundred-year storm that they designed it for. Taking out one piece of it because of the cost will still allow us to meet the requirements for a twenty-five-year storm. And that's kind of the water level that we have seen in that area constitutes about that type of storm, the flash flooding that we have seen recently. So our, our engineers said that for the most part, that's going to be able to handle most of the storms that we have seen, even taking that small piece out, which is some additional storage.
What would be the total cost to get the, let's call it the hundred-year level?
The bids that we received back for that additional piece, it was ninety-four thousand dollars.
Additional?
Additional.
Okay. The second question is Cape Cod Coffee, I'm sure they've signed a lease. I'm just curious how long the lease term is?
Right now, we have them for a three-year lease. We do have some contingencies in there, obviously. We have some growth in there, so that... Three plus five. So we do have that lease with them. Each year, we'll, we'll have a look back to see how they're doing. I know that out of season, they're not that busy. The, the most that they're getting, they are getting some people that are walking in off the street that know that they're there now. I really think it's, it's a, it's something that has to be constantly marketed to residents in the area that says Cape Cod Coffee is here. Cape Cod Coffee is very aggressive. They have been doing a lot of social media tweets and social media to basically say, we're here at the airport. So every time they talk about their Mashpee facility, they're also talking about their other facilities in the airport facility. The good thing about Cape Cod Coffee is that they do have partners here in Hyannis. They do want to be in this area, and they do want to continue here. So this is a chance for them to get noticed and recognized in the Hyannis Barnstable area.
So in addition to that, this cafe is under a tight guideline or tight timeframe. So hopefully, that will be done by June, end of June or June first, did you say?
I just gave the notice to proceed this evening. So we should be beginning fairly shortly.
That will certainly help their, their business, I think.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of quick questions. Just as we are replacing the hangar door at the Cape Air facility, they rent that hangar, and just as we are renovating for Cape Cod Coffee, they are paying rent to us, to the Airport Commission. Are they contributing any money towards any of these projects? Or are we funding it completely for two private entities?
For, I'll start with the hangar two drainage project. That has been a project that Cape Air has participated with us on that, on that project on several occasions. When we did the fuel farm, when we completed that two years ago, we also included French drains and some other drainage issues that we needed to take care of in that particular area. They did contribute to that fix. We have asked Cape Cod Coffee to contribute as part of the cafe extension, and we have asked them, we just haven't come up with a dollar amount yet.
And regarding the, the, the front of the airport location, I mean, they're, they're technically right across from where TSA basically screens for the, for the flights that, that need that level of security, as opposed to the Cape Air flights and the rhetoric, some of the rhetoric, well, rhetoric is in its own hangar, but the flights down on the, on the other end. I'm curious in terms of, as this patio is constructed, the entire glass front, is that going to be opened up at all?
Yes.
Is there a security issue for that section of the airport?
It, the patio is going on the opposite side of the terminal building, it's street side. So unfortunately, because of where the cafe is, the draw that would have brought more people in to see the airfield, we just don't have the cafe in the right location. So we do have the patio going on street side. That's not an issue with TSA.
It's not?
No, it's not. So it's not in the same location at T, of TSA. So there's no security that any passengers have to go through.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dagwa?
Yes, I like the idea of how you're trying to draw people to the airport with the cafe by, you know, inviting maybe people to come in to some kind of painting event or social group that'll have a cafe event there or something. My only concern with trying to draw in people to the cafe is the exit off the, off the airport when, when we're leaving. I know they're doing the rotary sometime soon. Well, I don't say soon, but I know they're going to do something with the rotary. And is that going to help? Or is the exit from the airport going to help? That's a real nightmare right now. Anybody that's leaving the airport to come on that rotary when there's heavy traffic.
The Hyannis Access Study talked about redoing Route twenty-eight and their rotary at some point. So when that does get funded, we want to work with the Cape Cod Commission and others to redevelop the entrance to the airport to alleviate that problem.
That would be my only concern for, I mean, if I wanted to do an event out there, I'd be concerned about, you know, some of my friends who are kind of up there in age now. And when, when the traffic's not heavy, you can get out there. But when the traffic's heavy at that rotary, you sit there, you know, ten minutes trying to get off. And that really needs to, needs to be addressed. And I think if we can do that, you can, you know, draw, I'm sure people would use it a lot more. Thank you.
Counselor Cullen?
Hi, yes. Thank you very much for the presentation. A quick question about the ninety-four grand shortage there between the twenty-five-year storm and the hundred-year storm. Having been underwater at my house for like the past three months, and it just dried up and then rained again, I'm thinking that the best plan is to plan for the hundred-year storm. So if you were to need ninety-four grand, would that be eighty percent paid by, by the state?
Yes, that would be eighty percent paid by the state. Bud and I have also talked about that, that possibility. We do plan to go to Mast dot to see if they would cover that. I'm not sure what other projects they have that have been earmarked for that three point five million, but we can always ask.
Yeah, I, I mean, the, since I've been a counselor, the airport's history is to come in and ask for money and then come back and ask again. And I think that the council, even though it's changed over three times since I was elected the first time, has constantly said, just ask what you need. Ask for what you need. Because I think we have a series of hundred-year storms constantly approaching now. So if we're only going to be on the hook for eighteen-eight out of that, then I would be willing to support that. So I'm just saying, thank you.
Understood, thank you.
Counselor Rap Crissetti?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Good to see you both. Can I ask how much is in the enterprise fund with the balances? Perhaps Mark Millen or somebody can tell me?
I think when we were in here about a week or so ago, it was two point one million left in our reserves at this point.
Two point one, and that's after this expenditure or before?
Before.
Before, okay. And I, I see the cafe doors, I look in deferred projects, and I see the cafe doors and windows were part of your deferred project, A I R nineteen dash five. But I don't see where any of the other projects, I don't see where the hangar drainage improvements or anything was in an ask that, that got denied this year, or is this...
The hangar project, we actually had divided over a five-year period. It was phased over a five-year period. So you might have only seen twenty-five thousand for fiscal year nineteen in our CIP.
Oh, okay, in the, in this year's?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And what about the, the forestry mulcher?
The forestry mulcher is something that came up as we were starting to clear around our fence line. We realized that the equipment that we had was, wasn't adequate. So when the state came across to us and they said, we'll participate in, in forestry equipment so that you guys can maintain your, your fence line, we said, sure, we have one in mind that could be attached. So it was an additional project. We have not come before you for that project in the past.
And how often do you use that? Would you use that mulcher?
You'll be surprised. Because our fence line is, is so long, we attack different parts of the fence on a yearly basis. So as soon as, as soon as the grass starts growing at the airport, that our maintenance folks are out there trying to just maintain our grass and, and cut the grass on the airfield. So we'll take sections of the fence. So by the time we're done with section A next year, we'll have to do it again. So it takes a while to get around our fence line.
All right, thank you.
Vice President Crocker?
Thank you. I'm, I'm terribly troubled with the drainage issue. As we know, in construction, to put drainage, subsurface drainage in, we're going to be opening the macadam, you're going to try to protect the macadam. When, when we talk to the Commissioner Santos, and we talk about road damage, it's always around drainage and water and how it happens because it's not handled correctly. So for us to endure in both the expense and the time to rip up a portion of the asphalt, put in substandard-sized tanks by hundred-year storms, and we had blushed people telling us we've had six or seven events in the last four or five years, and then close it up and then hope that we only have one or two events a year instead of eight, which you're having now, seems to be short-sighted. And one of the times that, as you've heard from the council, that we would probably support expending the right amount. So I would ask that tonight, I won't, I won't, even though I'm tempted to say this needs to be bifurcated, I would like to see this go, but I'd like to see you put in the supplemental request right away so you don't run into a timeframe coming into June. And then if your committee doesn't support it, or, or, or you find another way to value engineer... And then if your committee doesn't support it, or you find another way to value-engineer this problem away, then so be it. But the number-one issue on macadam is water. And what you're talking about is a substandard response when you open up that much macadam and try to straighten out a problem. So I'd love to see you come back on this.
Understood, and we'll take care of that as soon as possible. I think we were just being cautious because of what really we are.
And we appreciate it because we've been asking you about reserves. But we can't think we're solving problems, go through the exercise, and not really close the door on that problem. You guys got problems popping up all the time in an airfield and in an area inside your fence and outside your fence. So let's look them one at a time, let's win them, and let's go on to the next one, please.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
In many ways, that could end up, if you wait on that too, end up being more expensive when you have to add it than if you do it now, too. And with the budget constraints that you're faced with, that makes some fiscal sense going forward over the next, you know, in the near term here. Counselor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you. So to help kind of put a period to this conversation on the damage that we just saw, all the water that we saw, you said it's also a training facility for your pilots, which I think you need to keep going all the time. So how much did it cost to repair the damage that just happened, roughly?
I don't remember Cape Air's dollar amount that they put in. I know at one point with one of the storms, that was probably the third storm. One of the storms, I do know it was about sixty-five thousand that they had in damage.
I think you just proved your point, okay, for whatever amount it's gonna cost us, especially if you can get the match, then that puts this to rest. We can't play this game because it's costing you money every time it happens, so we don't, I don't think it's a good way to go. So on a happier note, to advertise the cafe, I know that you give free parking for like half an hour or half an hour?
Anytime they go to the cafe, they have free parking.
It's free parking, and so how do they know that? When they walk, when they drive in, it says parking for the cafe?
We do, we have signs, we have about three A-frame signs that point to the cafe. And we also put in new signs at the entrance to that parking lot that identifies cafe parking, free parking.
Excellent, because there are a number of people who are motivated to stay and listen on the television. So I want, I'm trying to advertise this. And with the coffee, what kind of food do they serve you, is it just sandwiches or...?
So right now, they do sandwiches, they do have two types of soup each day. They also make donuts at the airport, which is detrimental to us. For our health, but the donuts are really good. They have bagels, so they do have, they make breakfast sandwiches. So they're trying to, a variety of different items that they hope, you know, to sell and repeat customers will come back for those items.
Last question, what are the hours of your cafe?
They are open from seven to two.
Excellent, thank you.
Counselor Flores?
I'm just curious, how often does Mast DOT come up with an extra three-and-a-half million dollars to loan? Is this a one-time only, is this a unique situation?
No, last year, they had the same situation. And really, what has happened is they have a statewide project to build administration or terminal buildings for a number of different airports that have buildings that are in disarray. So what is happening with that, they have to get their permits in time for those projects. This one particular project, they were not able to get their permits in time for this project, so they knew they wouldn't be able to spend that money by June 30th, and that's what happened.
I want to say about four years ago, we got about five million dollars to redo the east ramp and put in water lines, electrical cables across the field and everything, and same type of short timeframe, and we finished it on June 30th.
Excellent. Well, I do wish you good luck with the coffee shop. I know when I lived on Nantucket, Hutch's was always crowded, so it's, if they can do it over there, there's no reason we can't do it here. I'm curious how it might impact Pandavanyon, though.
I think it's a different clientele. So, you know, who knows, when they get their liquor license, it could be different.
I hope so, thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Tinsley? All those in favor moving the question? That's unanimous. This is item 2018-104, this is a roll call vote.
Counselors. Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwa?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Crisetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary? Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Thirteen.
Thank you very much. Vice President Crocker, could you read and open the public hearing, item 2018-105, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Old Business Public Hearing, needing a majority vote. Introduced originally on April 5th and again on April 26th. 2018-105, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of one-hundred-sixty-seven-thousand-six-hundred dollars for the fiscal year, fiscal year 2018 airport operating budget as drafted.
I have a second, go ahead.
The airport is requesting to increase their operating budget for the following three projects. I do have a note on the aviation jet fuel, however. The original appropriation that you have in front of you was for to increase funds for aviation jet fuel for us to purchase fuel, legal fees that we've incurred for a number of different projects, and consultant fees for environmental analysis and reporting. In terms of the jet fuel, I just want to make this note that upon further examination of our finances, looking at what we had not used this year for various different operating funds, we were able to unencumber other funds to be able to cover our need for the additional fuel that we'll need to buy through June 30th. So at this time, we didn't have the time to amend our original request for that, but we'd still like to move forward with the request for additional fees to cover the legal fees and the consultant fees. The legal fees that we have incurred basically surround two particular issues. One is assistance with us in moving forward with the RFP for the Cape Town Plaza Kmart development property. The airport consulted our attorneys in that matter, and I'm glad to say that that went out, was posted today. David Anthony stole all my thunder on that particular project. But we do want to thank the town council, town of Barnstable employees for helping us get to where we needed to be to get that RFP out. So that was a big win for us, for everybody. The additional fees that we incurred surround the soils investigation, environmental investigation, that the airport was requested to do by DEP based on PFOS being found in our firefighting foam, similar to the Barnstable County issue where PFOS was found in that foam as well. So we incurred legal fees that were higher than what we had budgeted for those particular, in those particular areas. The consultant fees for environmental analysis and reporting, we have been working closely with our consultants and with requests that have been made to the airport by DEP to do further analysis of our soils at the airport. This was something that we did not have in our original request to cover for our consultants. We basically did not anticipate the additional needs that we had for soils investigation. So this fee in here covers the additional costs associated with lab results that were needed for soils, going out and taking soil samples, and reports that were needed to be written for DEP to respond to their request for information. Do you have anything to add?
No, not at this point.
All right, this is a public hearing. So any members of the public wish to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing? That's unanimous. Katie, I just wanted to clarify the number, it's one-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-six-hundred, but then I think you said that includes fuel, which you no longer need? So is the number different than that?
No, the number is correct. It should have been, according to the original appropriation language, should have been about fifty-three thousand higher.
It's already been adjusted, yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure, we heard that right. Council discussion on this item. Counselor Rap Crisetti?
Well, just a point, so now we're talking your reserves, your enterprise fund now is down to, I think, one-point-six if we appropriate, oh, excuse me, appropriated this, and then the half, that comes up to close to six-hundred thousand coming out of enterprise tonight, is that right?
That's correct, but about eighty percent of the first part will be reimbursed, so it won't be quite that bad.
Thank you.
And some of our share has been taken out of other funds, so it's not that bad a hit on the reserves.
Do we have a threshold where you won't dip below?
I believe we said last, last couple of weeks ago, I think the threshold was one million.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Do I have a motion, move the question? All those in favor moving the question? That's unanimous. This is item 2018-105, this is a roll call vote.
Counselors. Crocker?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwa?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Crisetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Thirteen.
All right, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both for being here, we'll see you towards the end of May. Whenever the next... Yeah, Bud will be here. We'll see him when they're in for the operational budget.
Yes, you will, thank you.
In my efforts to keep the town clerk on her toes, I'm gonna go out of order again. Under New Business, I wanted to invite our Director of Community Services up. I think she has one item that she wanted to talk about. Counselor Crocker, could you please read item 2018-139 under New Business?
Yes, Mr. President. New Business may be acted upon. 2018-139, acceptance of grants in the amount of two-hundred-fifty dollars from the Barnstable Policeman's Patrol Union, two-hundred-fifty dollars from Mass Cop Local 416 Barnstable Policeman's Superior Officers Union, and a hundred-and-fifty dollars from the Barnstable Municipal Employees Association to the Barnstable Youth Commission, as written.
Great, welcome, Lynn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lynn Point, Director of Community Services. These donations that were made by unions within the town were specifically for the purchase of door prizes that students would win at the youth summit that was held on March 16th. So staff doesn't get reimbursed for their picking up of these until these grants are accepted.
Any counselor discussion of questions on this?
Move the question.
Move the question.
I have a second, all those in favor moving the question? This is item 2018-139, all those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn. All right, now I'm gonna invite up our Director of Public Works, the esteemed Dan Santos. Are we just gonna add all this up into one figure and just... Blanket vote. All right, Counselor Levek. Could you please read and open the public hearing on item 2018-089, please?
It would be my pleasure, Mr. President, thank you. This is Old Business, open to a public hearing, roll call vote. Item number 2018-089, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of three million dollars, three million four-hundred-twelve-thousand dollars, five hundred dollars, for the purpose of funding the Public Roads Improvement Program as outlined in the fiscal year 2019, fiscal year 2023 Capital Improvement Plan, as written.
All right, welcome, Dan.
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the council, Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. This request is for three million four-hundred-twelve-thousand-five-hundred dollars from the Capital Trust Fund Reserves for public roads maintenance. The condition of the town's road system of more than seven hundred roads totaling two-hundred-sixty miles is deteriorating each year. Adequate maintenance and reconstruction where necessary is essential to preserve this major capital asset. Analysis performed through the pavement management program shows a significant backlog of needed public road repairs. In addition, the town has a backlog of approximately two-hundred-and-forty-five locations where drainage improvements are required to protect public safety and prevent potential property damage. Record rainfall events last year highlighted additional areas requiring storm drain attention. This program is designed to combat the progressive deterioration of the town's roadway assets and provide stormwater management system construction and repairs. As you can see in the slides, depending on physical conditions and analysis utilizing the pavement management program, the repairs may include one of several different approaches, including full-depth reconstruction, asphalt overlay, milling and paving, applying a chip seal surface layer, or crack sealing. In addition to surface repairs, improvement projects typically include installation or upgrading of drainage systems, curbing and sidewalks wherever practicable. Other program elements include traffic calming, ADA accessibility, engineering permitting, design, inspection, and materials testing. The final slide exemplifies the adage famously penned by Benjamin Franklin in the 18th century that "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." The graph illustrates that road deterioration occurs very rapidly between ten and fifteen years of road life. If we can take preventative measures before that point of rapid deterioration, our costs will be just a fraction of the cost of full reconstruction. So effectively, we are able to provide a higher condition of roadway at a much lower cost. During the fiscal year 2018 program, we have undertaken the following. We chip sealed eighteen roads, reclaimed five roads, milled and paved six roads, overlaid eight roads, and installed thirty-five drainage systems. In fiscal year 19, we proposed road rehabilitation work, milling and/or repaving of Bay Lane, Emerson Way, Longfellow Drive, Crosby Circle, Bayberry Lane, Glenwood Avenue, and Highland Drive in Centerville, Anchor Lane, Mariner Circle in Mooring Drive in Catuat, Winter Street in Hyannis, Pond Street in Osterville, and Cedar Street in West Barnstable. Major drainage improvements are planned for Clifton Lane and Old Stage Road in Centerville, Santua Road in Catuat, Oak Neck Road in Hyannis, and Great Bay Road in Osterville. Other roads may be substituted if necessary due to accelerated deterioration rates, unexpected damages, opportunities to address certain roads with other funding, or other factors. Smaller drainage projects, chip sealing, crack sealing, and preventive maintenance are also planned for various roads townwide to extend their service life. Thank you.
Thank you, and this is a public hearing, so any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor? All right, counselor discussion on this item. Counselor Tinsley?
Just a quick question. In our book, this item was for three million seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So this is about three-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand less. I was just wondering the difference, just, is it overall just savings in each item, or...
The three, the three-seven-fifty, that was our original request, but that is an error in the book. The number is the number that was presented this evening.
Any other counselors? Counselor Beeden Bender?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. So one thing, would it be possible just to get a list of all the roads that we can share that? So when my constituents call, I can let them know where the work's getting done? Is that available?
This list that I just...
The list of all the names of the roads?
I'll get that to you.
That would be great. The other thing is that, and I will be a broken record on this, is in relationship to bike lanes, and I realize that they don't work in every situation. But what I do notice that in the wording used to frame this rationale, things like traffic calming, pedestrian pathways, they're all present, but there is no mention of bike pathways. So I just want to make sure that we do keep that in mind because there are a lot of people that do like to bike around here. And if we look at the millennials, having complete streets is something that they really do appreciate and thinking of how we want to grow and move forward. So my concern is that if we don't even mention it in our rationale, are we thinking about it? And are we incorporating that into our thinking as we move forward? And it's like I said, I understand that it's not gonna work in every situation, but I'd like it to be part of the strategy as we approach each roadway that we're working on.
It absolutely is, and the rationale is trying to just get a small snapshot of the program. But providing pedestrian and bicycle access is absolutely a priority, and we look at it every time. It's mostly appropriate when we do the road reconstructions, when we're putting curbs in and redoing the road, and then we consider the shoulder... and then we consider the shoulder and the shoulder width that would provide availability for cyclists. And for example, on C Street, which will be starting in the fall, we've definitely made that accommodation, both with an off-road, multi, multi-use path, multi-use path. So that's for pedestrians or families with bicycles, but also the ability to drive on the road on the shoulder for those more hardcore cyclists. So, absolutely.
Counselor Rap Grissette?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Dan. I know you could have twice as much money. There's so much to do with the roads. Can I request that if a road's gonna be redone completely, the engineer doesn't locate the manhole covers on the wheel path of the car? I can see where your catch basins go, but it seems like, you know, the manhole covers are not in the center of the lane, but just off to the right, so you're driving over them. So when they start to fail, you feel it all, all the way. So they could move that into the center of the lane, or frankly, move it off the road altogether would be great, so.
Well, that's usually our, we try to do that, but we don't often have enough room. So only when we have to put them in the road, you know, will we do that, but I will definitely.
It'd be nice to have it in, so, so that it's, you're driving, not on them, but straddling them. So I request that. Also, I think the town has abandoned the See Click Fix app. Is that true?
Yes.
It has. I think it's still up on the website, so you might wanna put that down so that we can direct people, if they do have a pothole on their road, to go to your department's webpage. There's a very easy form to fill out. You do have to identify where it is, but if there is a pothole, I mean, I'm happy to take complaints from residents, which is one of my biggest complaints is potholes, but there's a direct link right on your website that people should be aware of, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other councilors? Counselor Neary?
Thank you, Mr. Santos. Just a question. On this list that you're working for fiscal nineteen, are those all town public roads?
Yes.
So there are no private roads on this?
Correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President. Dan, thank you for the presentation. Once again, going back to the initial presentation this morning, by, this evening by precinct one residents, as we move forward in trying to resolve those flooding issues during fiscal year nineteen, which is upcoming, none of those streets were on the list. Obviously, that, any improvements have not been budgeted in the FY nineteen budget at this point in time. So how do we resolve that between now and June thirtieth of two thousand nineteen?
Well, I think we have a process that we have to go through. We have to understand what's there, and we have to make sure that what is there is working properly. And then we can start looking at what some proposals might be to resolve those issues. So I think it's gonna take us many months, so I can foresee that any significant construction and to address issues there is gonna become in the next, the next capital program, which we will submit in October.
Okay, but we need to make sure that any kind of, any kind of work that happens during fiscal year nineteen at least is working towards accomplishing the goal of not having that area flood, because it's become a very dangerous situation.
Well, right. We're gonna, that's why I say we're gonna work on the engineering aspect and develop some proposals to address the problem that was brought forward.
I just hope we see something tangible so that the residents feel that we are responding as a town and, and moving forward with a solution. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Who's the question?
I have a second. All those in favor moving the question? That's unanimous. This is item twenty eighteen dash zero eight nine. It's a roll call, two-thirds vote.
Counselors. Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beadham Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor Dagwan, could you please read item twenty eighteen dash zero nine zero and open the public hearing, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item twenty eighteen zero nine zero? Okay. Appropriation and transfer order in the amount of one hundred and three thousand, five hundred dollars for the purpose of funding the design and permitting of Phase Three of the Department of Public Works office as outlined in the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three Capital Improvement Plan. And this should be open for a public hearing.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Dan.
EPW is seeking one hundred and three five, one hundred and three thousand, five hundred dollars from the Capital Trust Fund Reserves for design of renovations to the administrative and highway division offices on Route twenty-eight at Bursas Way in order to complete work begun several years ago to reorganize the department in a consolidated location to enable a more efficient and effective operation. This third phase of a five-phase project will provide much-needed accommodations for our growing female staff and office space for the administrative staff, which has filled every available space in the building. Construction will allow, well, excuse me, will also allow for the demolition of the two remaining occupied temporary staff trailers, which are well beyond their useful life, which will provide much-needed additional parking as well. The project will include toilet rooms, offices, conference spaces, employee lockers, and shower facilities to be located within the current garage area of the existing administration and highway building. Previous phases of the master plan have constructed the Emergency Response Center, DPW and administration, and technical support offices, and new roofs on existing buildings. Future phases, which will include construction of a new truck garage and salt shed, will be the subject of future CIP requests. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And quickly, before we go any further, you wanna introduce the staff that's here? We didn't do that, I don't think, to start like we usually do.
Sure. Assistant Director Rob Steen on the controls.
On percussions?
Paul Graves, Town Engineer, and directly behind me, Town Architect Mark Marinaccio.
Great. Welcome all. So this is a public hearing. Any members of the public that wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? That's unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item. Counselor Beadham Bender?
You need to get a new scale in that bathroom.
Counselor Rap Grissette?
Thank you. So you won't be doing any of this work until, what, two, twenty twenty-one, or? This is just for design?
It's a design, correct.
So nothing's gonna disappear? That trail, those trailers, everything's gonna stay the same for several years, right? You're looking down the road?
Yes.
Several years. Okay. That's too bad. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Hebert?
Thank you. So, yeah, that helps to know that, I mean, we, we gotta get started in order for you to get someplace in reasonable amount of time. Can you just explain some of the, some of the rooms? Am I making a mistake? Is that, is that a conference room, the biggest section here?
No, that's our, that's our employee break room. So we, so it's used extensively, in particular during snow and ice season, when we have all the contractors and employees in and out, and making food, and resting, and relaxing. So that's that area. That's the one you may have been in when you've been? Yes.
Up at the top, where it has the circles, what, what are those offices?
Locker rooms, showers. Yes.
It's quite a complex. How much of that do you not have right now? I mean, if you, this is planning?
Pretty much that whole long piece on the right of the slide.
You don't have?
We don't have. That's.
Okay.
This is, this is proposed, no, right now we're in this section here.
Okay, great. Because I, I've been in your building, and I said, a lot of that can't fit in what you have. Okay. Thank you.
Any other councilors? All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is item twenty eighteen dash zero nine zero. Roll call, two-thirds vote.
Counselors. Dagwan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep? Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley? Wallace?
Yes.
Beadham Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Cullum? Thirteen.
Great. Counselor Schnep, could you please read and open the public hearing on item twenty eighteen dash zero nine two, please?
Open for a public hearing, item twenty eighteen dash oh nine two, appropriation and loan order in the amount of two hundred and eighty-five thousand for the purpose of funding the school administration building mechanical cooling upgrades project as outlined in the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three Capital Improvement Plan.
I have a second. Go ahead, Dan.
EPW is requesting two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars from a bond issue for the design of major mechanical system upgrades at the school administration building. The historic building study conducted several years ago reported significant interior and exterior deficiencies in this building. Exterior restoration work has been completed utilizing both CIP and community preservation funds. What remains to be completed is the upgrade of mechanical systems within the building, the subject of this CIP request. With the completion of this work, the building will be fully renovated with only some limited work remaining for future second-floor school department office upgrades. The building mechanical systems are outdated, prone to breakage, inefficient, costly to operate, and replacement parts are becoming scarce and sometimes even unavailable, resulting in some creative Rube Goldberg solutions. Work will include mechanical upgrades at the lower level, emergency generator, cooling plant, sprinkler and hot water system, equipment replacement, renovation and expansion of the existing basement mechanical room, replacement of the thirty-ton cooling plant, removal of old concrete mounting pads, replacement of existing electric hot water heater with a new gas-fired water heater, and mixing valves, relocation of the gas service from the electric room into the mechanical room to resolve a major code violation, installation of new fire-rated walls and ceilings throughout the basement level, including fire-rated doors, ADA accessible restroom improvements and new lighting, mechanical and electrical services distribution replacement, and energy conservation improvements throughout. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing. Any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? And that's unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item. All those in favor moving the question? That's unanimous. It's item twenty eighteen dash zero nine two. Roll call, two-thirds vote.
Counselors. Flores?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Neary? Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beadham Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you. Counselor Cullum, could you please read and open the public hearing on item twenty eighteen dash zero nine three, please?
Yes, I'd like to open for a public hearing, item number two thousand eighteen dash zero nine three, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the design of the Bumps River Bridge repairs as outlined in the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three Capital Improvement Plan, as written.
Go ahead, Dan.
This CIP request is for one hundred thousand dollars from the Capital Trust Fund Reserves for the design of repairs to the Bumps River Bridge located on South Main Street at the Centerville-Osterville Line. Recent inspections by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, as well as inspection and analysis performed by the town's bridge consultant, have identified required maintenance and safety repairs. Completion of these repairs could extend the life of the existing bridge by as much as twenty-five years. Construction of a new bridge could cost as much as ten million dollars. The repairs include pile jacketing, deck improvements, waterproofing, guardrail, and road surface replacement. Failure to implement the recommended maintenance will result in further deterioration, necessitating more extensive repairs, and the potential reduction of its weight rating, which could impede travel by large trucks, fire apparatus, and school buses. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing. Any members of the public wish to come forward and speak, please do so now. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? That's unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item. Counselor Beadham Bender?
I just wanna say thank you. That, that bridge gets a ton of traffic, and it's been deteriorating for years. So on behalf of all of the constituents down there, and everyone who crosses over that bridge, thank you for getting this project started.
Vice President Crocker?
Hi, Dan. Is this a possibility that we are permit ready? Is this a long permit, obviously, or, or it's just a repair permit?
It's just a repair.
Okay. Is this a possibility, though, that we're repair-ready, and there may be some funding to assist us from either the feds on bridgeways?
Well, we had, we need to do the design, so after this, we will be.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If we get permit-ready, we could find some funding. We don't have to think that it may all be bore by us.
Yes.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you for thinking ahead.
Any other councilors? All those in favor moving the question? That's unanimous. This is item twenty eighteen dash zero nine three. Roll call, two-thirds vote.
Counselors. Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Neary? Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beadham Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Rap Grissette, could you please read and open the public hearing on item twenty eighteen dash zero nine four, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Under old business, item twenty eighteen zero nine four, appropriation and loan order in the amount of two hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars for the purpose of funding the demolition of the portable structures at the former Marston's Mills Elementary School. And the hazardous material evaluation study of the main facility is outlined in the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three Capital Improvement Plan, as written.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. EPW is requesting two hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars from a bond issue to undertake the first phase of demolition of the former Marston's Mills Elementary School. There are three portable structures on the site that were utilized as classrooms that are joined to the main building by a covered walkway. These structures are in excess of twenty-five years old, are well beyond their useful life, and have deteriorated extensively since the school closed in two thousand nine. They have become a hazard, a nuisance, and regularly attract vandals. These structures have no salvage value and need to be demolished. The project involves the design, permitting, abatement, utilities disconnection, labor and disposal fees to demolish and dispose of the temporary structures. This project also includes hazardous materials testing and evaluation of the existing school building. Additional work may be required based on discovered conditions during evaluation and demolition. The former elementary school was closed in two thousand nine by the Barnstable Public Schools during a major reconfiguration of the school's districts. It was used for two years as a storage facility for surplus school furniture from the closure of four schools. Both the school department and town have been unsuccessful in attracting entities to lease the building. It has been decided that the best course of action is to demolish the structures on the property and perform basic site restoration in preparation of an as-yet-to-be-determined future use. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. This is a public hearing. So if any members of the public wish to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those, all those in favor of closing the public hearing? That's unanimous. Counselor discussion on this item. Counselor Leveque?
Thanks, Dan, for putting this on a docket. So, yeah, those buildings obviously need to come down. That field, however, the field that's closest to those buildings is, is still used. It's permitted out to Barnstable Little League. Do you have any kind of timeline of, of, you know, as long as this gets approved, that we would be doing that project that might not interfere with that baseball season?
Well, it won't this year, certainly, because this is, this is primarily designed, so the demolition, the demolition of the, the portables, and that would, that wouldn't be a really extensive demolition like when we take the building down, and that's a number of years away, so. And we would work with, with you and users to make sure that we're not impacting a schedule, or if we have to adjust our schedule based on finishing a season, it was definitely.
And I, and just, I had made a phone call. I talked with Andy. There's also some ancient, historic swing sets there that... They're very old. And I was just curious if there was a plan to possibly remove those.
There, there is. If it hasn't been done already, it's imminent.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Schnep?
Mr. President, just a question on the hazardous material evaluation study. Is that being done to properly know how to take the building down? It's, it's not for any...
If it hasn't been done already, it's imminent.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Schnep.
Mr. President, just a question on the hazardous material evaluation study. Is that being done to properly know how to take the building down? It's, it's not for any future purpose of the existing permanent building?
Correct. It's part of the demolition. We have to identify and remove all the hazardous materials first.
Counselor Rap Grissette.
Yeah, I think I remember a plan on those historic swings. So, we're, we're going to be looking at over a million and a half dollars in, in the long run to demolish this, this building. You know, and, and I know the portables are an attractive nuisance right now. I think that's why you're concentrating on them.
Yes.
Because you don't want vagrants and whatever. I, I really, I, this is more of a, a statement to the manager and the asset management committee. We really need to decide what we're going to do with this property and fold it into a plan toot sweet. And if it's housing, let it be housing, and let's just get on with it. That has languished for so long, and the school has become an eyesore, you know? It really has. And I know the residents, I'm sure, or my fellow counselors from that village are so anxious to see something happen with that site, whatever that is. But it's, it's kind of a shame that we're kind of going at this when we, what we should be doing is welcoming someone to come in and demolish it, and, and make something happen, and make it housing, or whatever it is. So, you know, I'll support this, but, boy, this is really languished, so.
Any other counselors? Need a second? Out of the other 12, the other 11 of you. All right. All those in favor moving the question? That's unanimous. This is item 2018-094. Roll call, two-thirds vote.
Counselors. Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Stein-Hilber.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Beeden Bender.
Yes.
Crocker.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Flores.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Thirteen.
Great. Counselor Wallace, could you please read and open the public hearing on item 2018-095, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is Old Business, open for a public hearing, item number 2018-095. Appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $45,000 for the purpose of funding the design of the sidewalk on Ocean Street as outlined in fiscal year 2019, fiscal year 2023 capital improvement plan as written.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Dan.
This project request is for $45,000 from the Capital Trust Fund reserves for the design and permitting of a new sidewalk on Ocean Street in Hyannis. The project will entail providing pedestrian access and street lighting along the east side of Ocean Street from Gosnell Street to Calmas Beach, located at the end of Ocean Street. This project will result in a safe and desirable connection for pedestrians between Calmas Beach, Veterans Beach, the Memorial Parks, and the Legacy Trail. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing. If any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of the closing of public hearing? Council discussion on this item. Counselor Cullum.
Yes, thank you for bringing this forward. I know that a lot of my constituents over there in that area are really looking forward to a walkable path to the beach. Right now, it's really truncated and difficult to pass. And also, there's some issues of, just some neighborhood issues around there. It will really help. Basically, every upgrade we do helps. And I know that there's some really involved people from that community through the Greater Hyannis Civic Association have met with them to, to boost this project, so I hope we have support in the council for it. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Tinsley.
Really, I, I just want to piggyback on what Counselor Cullum said, that this, thank you so much for bringing this forward. Me, my family, friends, even from our precinct, go to Calmas Beach probably two or three times a week year-round. That, that's our number-one beach, and, and this is so needed. There's so many people that walk, ride, you see them all the time, and, and besides making the area look better, it's just going to be a safety issue, so thank you. This definitely has 100% support.
Anyone else? All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is item 2018-095. Roll call, two-thirds vote.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Stein-Hilber.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Beeden Bender.
Yes.
Crocker.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Flores.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you. Counselor Flores, could you please read and open the public hearing, item 2018-096, please?
Yes, I will, Mr. President. This is Old Business, public hearing, roll call, with a two-thirds vote required. Item 2018-096, appropriation and loan order in the amount of $667,000 for the purpose of funding the design and hazmat removal project at the Armory Building as outlined in the fiscal year 2019, fiscal year 2023 capital improvement plan as written.
Go ahead, Dan.
This CIP request is for $667,000 from a bond issue, which will be added to the $20175 appropriation in February to begin the minimum required improvements at the former National Guard Armory on South Street across from Town Hall. The work is proposed to be accomplished in phases. The first phase, the subject of this request, includes design of the minimum required improvements and hazardous materials evaluation and removals. There's been a long and unsuccessful history trying to find a suitable tenant for this facility, with one of the main deterrents being its existing condition and the cost to make it habitable. This project arrests that deterioration and gives the town flexibility regarding its ultimate use. In addition to the hazardous materials evaluation, the first phase of improvements is for design to address the basic infrastructure of the facility, including structural repairs, utility services, heating system, fire protection, plumbing, and electrical systems. The next phase, proposed for FY '20, is the construction of the required minimum improvements. At the conclusion of that phase, the town can proceed with final build-out for a municipal use or seek to lease the facility. The final phase, if selected, is for design and construction of a final municipal solution. This work would total, this work would result in a totally renovated space that could house the executive and legislative branches of town government. If the town chooses a municipal solution, it would leverage the Armory's unique location adjacent to the existing town campus to provide key town offices that are on one level, ADA-friendly, and easily, easily accessible by the public. If the town elects not to pursue this series of CIPs, the cost of demolition of this facility is estimated to be approximately $1.3 million. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing. So if any members of the public wish to speak to this item, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? And that is unanimous. Counselor, discussion on this item. Counselor Schnep.
Thank you. Could you give us an update on the state contributions for this project? I believe when we approved the $200,000 a month ago, there was anticipated that there's going to be a bond issue at the state for a significant reimbursement of this?
I don't have any further information about that.
Tell me as you can speak to that.
It was $1.6 million, and I, I have not heard that they, they've issued that yet. So we are awaiting that information.
So our decision tonight is to, for the town to take on the complete project, whether or not we would be getting any support from the state?
That, that would be for the construction portion. This would be the upfront design and mitigation, hazmat mitigation. Yes.
Anyone else? Counselor Hebert.
Thank you. Maybe this is more for Mark, but the, the Hyannis Historic Society has already indicated that they want us to work as hard as we can to maintain the, the Kennedy legacy there. Is that part of our thinking? When I hear, tear the building down, there would be some real concerns about that.
Well, I, I think that in, in, I think it would be difficult to tear, tear the building down. But I, I do believe that short of having, having it been historically designated, which it may or may not have been, I've received different communications on that. Does it have a historic designation at this point, Mark?
It's, it's, it can.
It can, but it doesn't yet.
It is, it's recognized by Massachusetts.
So, so we're kind of in a gray area, but once it's designated, we're not going to be able to knock it down. So, but we would be able to access potentially additional funds. We've talked to Lindsay Council, and there's the potential to access CPC funds for repairs immediately and then longer term. We want to get the design done so that we can move forward. We've had this property sitting unused for, for many years. As described earlier, we hope that the earmark of $1.6 million comes through. If we end up citing facilities there, we may be able to access not only historic funds, not only CPC funds, not only local funds, but also cable funds if we renovate and create some sort of a, a room similar to this that could be utilized. And during that process, we will need to make a decision as to whether we are going to utilize it for municipal and look at other municipal facilities that may, you know, backfill if we shift our organization to, to fill this space, or we would look to lease it and recover the cost of whatever we bear here in our Capital Trust Fund from those revenues we generate. At this point, we've been unsuccessful, I believe, four times with this one, and not unlike the Marston's Mills Elementary School. You're, you're correct that we've had this a long time in our inventory, but we have not had successful bidders in using that facility, primarily because of the asset and the condition it's in.
Right. Thank you.
Again, we don't want to just sit here and talk about this multiple year. We need to, we need to take action, make decisions with these assets, have a purpose for them, maintain them properly, or dispose of them. But we shouldn't just sit there and let them fall apart, and, and it just adds costs later on to somebody.
And I think that this puts a message, strong message out, that, I mean, there's so many things that we looked at tonight, and when we look at all the projects that's underway, there is a tremendous focus on the Village of Hyannis. So some people who think that we have ignored Hyannis and its needs, I think that this speaks well for our focus, so thank you very much.
Counselor Wallace.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mark, the Asset Management Committee is going to move in this direction, look at this with our resource people, David Anthony, and of course, Andy Clyburn, and really focus on what can be done, as this will be the focus of like the second staging of this committee, if you will. So we've been instructed by our leadership here as to that's the direction we're going to take, and we're looking forward to it. So thank you for all the help you've given us.
Well, thank you. We welcome. It's been a very successful working relationship with our Asset Management Committee, and I expect that both with the Marston's Mills property and the Armory, you'll see very positive outcomes.
Counselor Rap Grissette.
Thank you. I, I don't believe that building is over 75 years old, so I'm not sure how it would be, I, what is the year of the building, do you know?
It was built in the early 50s.
Yeah, so. Oh, I understand that it's significant because JFK, but it's not, I'm not, and I'd be curious to see how it would be eligible for CPC if it's not a historical building. But I think the, it's probably a good thing for the town that no one accepted the RFP or it never worked out, because I think, I think that Armory should be used for municipal. I think it should be all on one campus with this building, school administration, and let's abandon 200 main, and let's bring everybody, you know, in the folds here. So I, I support this, and I, I'm, I'm curious, or I'm excited to see some, some work done on the old Armory. Thank you.
Counselor Dagwan.
I agree. I, I'm happy to see that we're finally doing something with this building. I was a part of the, one of the bids that they, that an individual applied for, and we, at the time, we had the National Geographics, which was going to be very, very interesting that they would come here and would be interested in displaying a lot of the, the treasures that are discovered in our oceans. So, you know, there was going to be, you know, more and more future types of things that they would find, and I thought that was going to be a great idea, maybe a great asset for our, our town as well, for tourism reasons alone. But that fell through, and it's time to move forward in, in a different direction with this particular building, because it's just been a long time. It's been a lot of projects that have been put out there to do something with it. And I, and I hope, again, we don't lose the, the legacy of JFK, who made his speech there. So that's important, too.
Counselor Wallace.
Move the question.
All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is item 2018-096. Roll call, two-thirds vote.
Counselors. Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Stein-Hilber.
Yes.
Crocker.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Flores.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Great, thank you. Counselor Rap Grissette, could you please read item 2018-103?
Thank you. This is Old Business, may be acted upon. Appointments to a board committee or commission, resolved that the town council appoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board committee or commission. Disability Commission, Mark Bronco, Marston's Mills, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2019. Public Works Commission, Ed Eichner, from Centerville, as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2018. Shellfish Committee, Christopher Freeman, West Barnstable, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2019. Water Quality Advisory Committee, Fred Dempsey, from West Barnstable, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2018. And Zoning Board of Appeals, Mark Hanson, from Centerville, is an associate member to a term expiring 6/30/2020.
I have a second. Any council discussion on this item?
Any questions?
All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is item 2018-103.
Thank you. This is Old Business, may be acted upon. Appointments to a board committee or commission, resolved that the town council appoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board committee or commission. Disability Commission, Mark Bronco, Marston's Mills, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2019. Public Works Commission, Ed Eichner, from Centerville, as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2018. Shellfish Committee, Christopher Freeman, West Barnstable, is a regular member to a we are requesting that you authorize a transfer of some excess general fund reserves that we have into the Capital Trust Fund. So, this isn't an actual expenditure. We're just moving it from one bucket of funds to another bucket of funds because we're trying to dedicate more and more resources for our capital program. This will come from the general fund reserves. It will still leave us $12 million in our general fund reserves, which is more than double what the town council's minimum reserve level is. So, we're not compromising our financial integrity as well. So, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. And this is a public hearing, so if any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor? Counsel, discussion on this item. All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is item 2018 dash zero nine seven. This is a roll call vote.
Counselors. Schnep.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Beeden Bender.
Yes.
Crocker.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Flores.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Great, thank you. Counselor Rap Grissette, could you please read item 2018 dash one zero three?
Thank you. This is Old Business, may be acted upon. Appointments to a board committee or commission resolved at the town council appoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board committee or commission. Disability Commission, Mark Bronco, Marston's Mills, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2019. Public Works Commission, Ed Eichner, from Centerville, as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2018. Shellfish Committee, Christopher Freeman, West Barnstable, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2019. Water Quality Advisory Committee, Fred Dempsey, from West Barnstable, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2018. And Zoning Board of Appeals, Mark Hanson, from Centerville, is an associate member to a term expiring 6/30/2020.
I have a second. Any counsel discussion on this item? All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is item 2018 dash one zero three. Appointments to a board committee commission. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous, and Counselor Beeden Bender has left the dais. All right, moving on to, let's see, who's up next? Counselor Hebert. Could you please read item 2018 dash one zero seven and open the public hearing, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number 2018 dash one zero seven, appropriation and transfer order of $60,000 for the fiscal year 2018, Department of Public Works operating capital budget.
Mark, go ahead. Thank you again. This item is requested to replenish DPW's capital outlay budget in their operating budget this year with the several storms that we had over the winter. Sandy Neck, as you know, lost a lot of sand. DPW stepped to the plate, used their operating capital to replenish the sand, and so now we're asking to replenish that so they can purchase the equipment that they were originally intended to use that $60,000 for. We have built into the fiscal year 19 budget a reimbursement from the enterprise fund to the general fund to reimburse our reserves for this. And we've also increased Sandy Neck's operating budget next year to provide them more funding for sand replenishment if needed.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing. So if any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor closing the public hearing? That's unanimous. Counsel, discussion on this item. All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is coun, this is item 2018 dash one zero seven. It's a roll call vote.
Counselors. Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Beeden Bender.
Yes.
Crocker.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Flores.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Great, and that's the end of our Old Business, which is the end of our capital budgets for FY '19. Nice job, everybody. We spent a little bit of money. All right, moving into New Business. Counselor Rap Grissette, could you please read item 2018 dash one three eight for a second read on May 3, 2018?
Yes, Mr. President. This is a first reading. Item 2018 one three eight. Appointments to a board committee or commission resolved. The town council appoints the following individual to a multiple-member board committee or commission licensing authority. Nancy Carlson Lidman of 23 Tupelo Road, Marston's Mills, is an associate member to a term expiring 6/30/2020. Refer this to a second reading on May 3.
Second.
I have a second. This is item 2018 dash one three eight. Appointments to a board committee commission. All those in favor of referring this to a second read on May 3, 2018? And that is unanimous. Counselor Tinsley. Could you please read item 2018 dash one four zero and refer to a public hearing on May 17, 2018?
Yes, Mr. President. New business, refer to a public hearing on May 17, 2018. Item number 2018 dash one four zero. Appropriation and loan order of $40,000 pursuant to temporary repair to private roads program regarding Locust Lane in Barnstable as written.
I have a second. This is item 2018 dash one four zero. All those in favor referring this to a public hearing on May 17, 2018? And that is unanimous. And that ends the orders of the day. Our next regular meeting will be Thursday, May 3, 2018. Vice President Crocker.
Yes, Mr. President. I present a motion to go into executive session to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with a non-union employee and not to reconvene and open. I move we go into the executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Subsection 21-2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with the non-union employee, the esteemed Mark Els, and not to reconvene and open session thereafter.
Roll call.
Counselors. Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Beeden Bender.
Yes.
Crocker.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Flores.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you.